Franklin County, Boulder County Commission in the ninth session. Commissioner Jones with your leaders in the prayer and the pledge.
Praise you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day you've given each and every one of us. We thank you for the opportunity to be here today. May I ask God that you'd be in the middle of all our decision making, our discussion today? Father, we thank you for a better today and a better tomorrow for all the residents and visitors to Franklin County because of having been here today. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
United States of America, the great Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on. Next on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Next on the agenda will be the payments of the county bill.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Public comments?
Good morning Commissioners. My name's Anne Burchwell. I worked approximately ten years for the library system, but began my library career at the Carabel branch, working in a grant-funded position as a coordinator, before beginning at the library as a library assistant in East Point. Pardon me. I was one of those people that Mr. Massie has mentioned that I worked their way from the ground floor at a salary of $21,000 annually. I began my educational path and attained my associate's degree in business administration. I then received my bachelor's in human resource management and then my master's in library science. However, there was no compensation nor assistance from Franklin County financially. At two meetings, Mr. Massie stated that these directors used our money, eighty to ninety thousand dollars, to get their masters and leave. No, the cost was more like a hundred and forty thousand in student loans. When I became director, my salary was thirty-five thousand a year. I worked, earned a salary to pay my bills like everyone else. But a salary of thirty-five thousand is the lowest salary for a library director in the state of Florida. I was glad to hear that you've raised the salary for a library director. I have deliberately kept my distance from the library, but I believe it's important for me to express my thoughts for your consideration. At the October first meeting, you Commissioners were reviewing recommendations from Labor Attorney Leonard Carson regarding suspending the use of volunteers at the Carabel branch. Mr. Parrish, you appeared to be appalled at the findings of the report and brought out three major points. Number one, the problems at the Carabel branch were the result of staff and volunteer behaviors with treatment of a team of A and Team B. You strongly disagreed because it's one library with two branches. You went on to say that there is only one system with the director and her or his staff. Volunteers are intended to assist the staff, to serve the public, not run the library. Point: Volunteers don't run the library. In response to this point, as a director, I could not agree more. There had been and continues to be an us-in-them mentality. The director cannot be in two places at one time and must split his or her time between two branches. The East Point branch is considered to be the administrative branch. It even says that on the building. All my files and main mail was received at that branch. In fact, all the books and materials were processed at the East Point branch. When I became director, I started to change some of the procedures, including Carabel and the material processing, to share the workload between branches. I also asked the small staff to spend one day bi-weekly to work at the opposite branch, a rotation concept, to learn how the other branch operates. They should be the same, but some had different processes. I had a staff person at the Carabel branch tell me that she had gotten rid of the last three directors and she would get rid of me.
Your time up, ma'am.
I have friends in high places. I'm sorry?
Your time up.
My time's up?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, I'm really sorry. I would just ask that you consider I had a interference. Mr. Massie came and told me how to do my job. He came into the director's office and told me how to do it. Please, don't let that happen to this next director.
Your time up, ma'am. Thank you. Next on the agenda, I mean, on public comments?
East Point Library. Last week, I called there to reserve one of the meeting rooms. It was told that there's no, all the meeting rooms were already scheduled because of voting. I don't know what that voting was about, but they didn't even ask me what date or what time. So I was wondering, the East Point and the Carabel previous director was here, which prompted me to think about that conversation with East Point, and was wondering if the board could look into that since you're not going to answer any questions, which is okay. Christmas decorations, such a minor thing, I know, but it represents any town when they're put up. And I've noticed for the last three years that there's a lot of decorations put up by the city and the county that the bulbs are out and have been out. So I was wondering if there's any group or anything that look at these when they're, before they're put up, to see maybe the bulbs can be replaced or something like that. It would enhance the way the decorations look and give a little bit more pride to our county. And that's it. I hope you all staying warm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
My name is Lloyd Childery. I work with Waste Pro. I'm the governmental affairs director as well as municipal management. Most of y'all deal with Greg James here whenever there's a local situation, and just wanted to let you know that we're coming up on the Christmas season. My position is newly developed, probably within about the last ninety days. I work throughout the region, which covers mostly the North Gulf Coast from the Big Bend over towards Mobile, Alabama, but I'm housed out of Tallahassee. I was hoping to leave my business card with y'all in the event that you need something. You know, you want to have something expedited, you have some issues that you feel comfortable talking about with, you know, with someone that is at the government levels. I'd be happy to leave anything with you that you need to contact me, or if I can get your contact information, I'd appreciate that as well.
You'll be able to get all that with Michael. Just check with Michael and he'll give you all the info and you can leave yours with him and he'll pass it to us.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Public comments? Next on the agenda will be the department director's report, Mr. Howard Nevers, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning Commissioners, how y'all doing?
Hey.
I've got nothing for the board this morning.
Well, anybody got anything for Mr. Howard?
Just appreciate the work you've been doing in my district. Thank you for the follow-up, very much so.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Howard.
Why couldn't Fonda leave anything he needs to report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Fonda is, family medical issue, he's out today, so, and he had no report for the board. He said Albert might have been here if he was able to, but apparently not, so.
Okay.
If anything comes up, let me know. I'll get in touch with Fonda or Albert.
Alright. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Banega. Emergency Management.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
My first action item is board's direction on C-30 West repairs versus mitigation FEMA To do the repairs and the mitigation for C-30 West, which is the Appalachian section, our portion would be, excuse me, $172,633.37. I've already spoken to Aaron and the funds are available for mitigation. I just need board direction on whether to follow through with this.
Yeah, they are available in the road paving fund. Now, one thing that you have going on is, for this current budget year, there's approximately 1.662 million in the road paving fund for future paving projects. To do the mitigation, it depends if you all want to go into that. Now, we can probably bear the response of the repair, but the mitigation was the greater one, Pam, and the other was the fifty thousand.
Yes, yes. To do just the regular repairs, no mitigation, the county's twelve-and-a-half percent would be fifty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Plenty of money to water us a little bit. So, this is the, you have a couple options here. One, first of all, I think you need to do the mitigation. The road is on a high bank. If you just put asphalt down and repair the road to pre-storm conditions, the road's going to wash out again. So I think mitigation is necessary to protect the road for future uses, especially in the event if we have a small storm like a tropical storm where there is no federal money, then we're going to be fully responsible. So now's the chance to fix the road properly, even though it's going to cost us twelve-and-a-half percent or twenty-five percent of the cost, now's the time to do it. Twelve-and-a-half percent, I'm sorry. So, but this is your funding sources. We have DEO money. We have seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of DEO money for which the number one expenditure is the Alligator Point road.
Yep.
It will not, unless the project goes awry, it will not use all seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So there's some of that money will be left over. Once we sign the contract for Alligator Point, we will know how much money we have that could go to this site. It could be as much as a hundred thousand dollars. So that's one funding source. The second funding source is what Aaron mentioned, which would be Commissioner Parrish's, his share of gas tax money for his district. We did the same thing on Alligator Point. Commissioner Bolt used some of his money to put a surface down, that was twenty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, it's discussion and direction from the Commissioner, but there is money in the road paving to do that out of his district's funds. The third thing is, and this is a futuristic thing, but I say it now because I had a phone call from Maria Melissa Shire, who's fairly high up in recovery in the state of Florida, and she told me, we were talking about Alligator Point, and she told me as sort of aside, that she fully expected the state of Florida to meet the threshold where the disaster becomes a ninety-ten match. When it becomes a ninety-ten match, then our percent is only five percent. So things change, but that won't happen until the state of Florida meets that match, which might be two years from now, because it takes a while for all these things to process. So I say this, I think the safe bet is to use road paving money, then if we get Alligator Point resolved, then we actually end up using the DEO money, is how I see it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just a point of clarification, also with the road repair money, don't we kind of mix all that money as Commissioners representing our districts? We, you know, offer some to other Commissioners and they the same? I mean, because it goes further?
First of all, I'm sure all the other commissioners love that to happen, but...
Oh, okay.
Generally...
I felt that anyway.
You generally spend, I mean, because road paving is very expensive. When we do a road paving, and I'll defer to the record, but when we do a road paving project, it's very expensive and the board and the finance office tries to be careful and the engineering firm to be careful to allocate equal amount of money to each district because, you know, it's, everybody wants to see the same kind of improvement. So generally in road paving, no, you're not sharing money.
Okay.
You are allocated a percentage of the budget and that's what you deal with.
And right now, we have about three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand per district accumulated.
But that's going to go down with this fifty-two thousand you're needing, is that correct?
Well, yeah, but we're not going to do fifty-two thousand, in my opinion. I mean, that would be a waste of money. You need to look at the hundred-and-seventy-two thousand.
I see. So it's going to reduce the whole pot by that much?
I don't know, guy, the word policy. You all can put the money up any way you want.
Okay.
But traditionally, you spend it at my district.
Okay. I understood.
Go ahead.
Okay. On this particular issue, I agree with Alan, we need to do the mitigation.
Yep.
And the main reason we're doing that is to try to fix the road and prevent further erosion. Now, if you have a tropical storm, which is not a no-name storm, and we don't do the mitigation, that road gets washed out again and it's bore strictly by the county.
Yep.
Yep.
So you might as well go the extra mile and try to prevent an erosion prevention, use the road. The erosion preventative measure to keep this road from washing out in the event of a no-name storm, which FEMA does not help at all. Right now, we have FEMA help to get this road fixed and fix it properly. As you were talking, and I thought about this yesterday, I met with Alan and Pam on this, and I'm fine with paying that out of my road paving fund, but it's going to severely delete that road paving fund for District Four, which I represent. So my thought on that is, is I think that half of the money for this match right here should come out of the DEO money and then half come out of my road paving share. And if you're a little bit short on Alligator Point, or you have a hundred thousand left over, that's fine, but if we're a little bit short, I think Commissioner Bolt should take some of his road paving money and make up the difference. I'm not asking for a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars, but I do think that some of this money should come out of the DEO monies, like a half-half scenario. So that's still...
That's extra money.
That's still ninety thousand dollars out of my road paving money if you use ninety thousand out of DEO monies, which still allows six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars to go towards the Alligator Point road. I think that's the most equitable way to do it.
That's fine. And the contract that we have at four-point-seven million dollars would allow, would cover all the match. So if always the contract is the price holds, then we'll be able to do DEO and you...
Both of these roads are county roads. Both of them severely damaged. And the one down here is, that they're talking about on C-30, I'm worried about somebody, you run off the shoulder of the road, you're going to fall twenty feet, somebody's going to get killed down there. And that's my greatest fear, as I told Alan and Pam yesterday, I want this project to move forward. When you say move forward, it ain't going to happen next week.
No.
It's going to still be a while, but I think we need to take those preventative measures. So I'm in favor of moving forward with the mitigation and try to fix the road and fix the embankment leading up to the road as best we can for the dollars. We'll see what exactly what the dollars are when we go out for bids. So I'm going to make a motion that we move forward and go out for bid on this project and see what the bid's coming back at.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Good.
Commissioner, I have another action item. We actually got the official letter yesterday from the state. They approved our new CMP, the county's emergency management plan, comprehensive emergency management plan, and one of the requirements is for the county to adopt that plan.
Page at the board. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor? All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I will be in Tallahassee at the current issues for emergency management. I will be talking to mitigation and trying to push our project forward, especially this one, and the Alligator Point one, finding out why, how soon can FEMA obligate these so we can move forward.
Okay.
You going to ask for some more money?
I'll ask. I always ask, don't admit it good, but I'll ask.
Okay. Alright, good luck with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Can I test the skill of Mr. Marone and the system?
Okay.
Can I try and do one of my items on my report? I have a little bit about mitigation.
Oh, okay.
So, question is, how do I, how do I describe to everybody knows where I'm going, Michael? Sixteen, is that right? Well, let's see here, how about D? Well, I'll do C and D. Okay. Actually, I'll do B, C, D. Okay. Alright, so sixteen, B, C, and D. Provide the board an amendment, I sent to FDM regarding the loss of revenue at Williams Hospital. This is really not going to be, and you'll deal with Pam, but that's because of Hurricane Michael. The last meeting, I provided the board the loss of revenue statement from David Walker, which I sent on to the state, say, on Monday, November twenty-fifth, Mr. Walker provided me with an evaluation of additional revenue losses at Williams. And that same day, I sent the revised loss figures to FDM. The total revised loss for Williams is one-point-one million dollars. The FDM staff informed me that when I sent up the additional revenue loss, that it might be too late for consideration, but it said they would try. The FDM allocation of funds is twenty-five million dollars for all the counties affected, and by my calculation, there's more than twenty-five billion dollars loss of revenue in the counties impacted by Hurricane Michael. I asked the FDM staff how the funds are going to be allocated, she said the decision hasn't been made. So when you're up there, you may hear whispers of how the money's being split up.
Okay.
So I just, if you hear something, let us know. Alright, that's B. C, Alligator Drive update. Representative Schoff had tried to schedule a meeting for yesterday, Monday, December second, with FDOT, the Federal Highway Administration, and FEMA represented to discuss Alligator Point, but some of the people requested by Mr. Schoff could not make that date. So Representative Schoff is rescheduling it. I don't know when that'll happen. I've been in contact with Clay Kennedy of Dubear Engineers and Joe Morrow, MRD, regarding the timeline for building Alligator Drive. The governor has sent the emergency final order for work associated with Hurricane Michael, so the county is going to inform FDEP, which they've done this morning, Joe Morrow's done it, that we expect reconstruction to start Alligator Drive on March first now, not any time in January, people in Alligator Point, March first. We're still holding the contract to a hundred-and-fifty days, construction timeline, and this morning, FEMA asked for a copy of the contract, and I talked with Clay about that, so we're waiting to see what exactly they want. He claims that FEMA person that they are moving on the project. Okay. So then the item I really want to talk about with Pam here is item D, HMGP fund update. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funds have been announced by the state. Ms. Maron, I may have already provided the board with the number, but Franklin County was eligible to receive some five-point-nine million dollars in HMG funds for qualified projects. Pam will be working on some possible projects, but the board needs to be aware that there is a twenty-five percent match for any HMGP project, so there is a local cost to any project the county submits. The school board and the cities are entitled to ask for some of this money, and if they do, they will have to provide the local match. Because of the high priority of Alligator Point, FCMC has already submitted a grant to purchase some twenty-one parcels on Alligator Point, and that's using this HMGP money. And for that first project, the state will provide the match, and I got this confirmed yesterday from Sarah and from Tracy. So the first phase of acquisition on Alligator Point will not have a cost to the county to cover. At this time, offers have not been made to any property owner on the point, so we still do not know whether anyone will accept the valuation that FEMA is using. Well, and let me just say parenthetically, so if you divide the money, four-point-two million dollars is the general application that we have there for Phase One, the twenty-one parcels, that's two-hundred thousand dollars a parcel. I don't know anyone's going to sell a house for two-hundred thousand dollars in Alligator Point. I just don't know, if that's the average value. And some, some may be old concrete block houses that they're happy to get rid of, some may be vacant lots, but some are going to be more valuable than that. So I don't have any idea how many we're going to end up purchasing. Back to the script. While FCMC has written the grant phase request, has written the grant request to purchase the property, FCMC will not be managing the acquisition phase. At this time, Pam and I and her consultant, Tracy, who is with...
Management expert.
The management experts have discussed, the management experts handling the acquisition phase. We had a conference call last week with FCMC, and FCMC is providing Pam's consultant with all the files and twenty-one parcels. The HMGP program includes that administrative fee that Pam's consultant would be able to charge the effort of handling the acquisitions. Pam and her consultant will provide more, will provide more information on that if it looks like any property will actually take the FEMA evaluation. So Tracy's sort of looking at that, she's getting the files together, and we'll see, you know, once the grant application's been approved, and it should be the first one the state of Florida approves, because we are the first one in line. That's because of FCMC's acquisition, their influence on the situation. So as soon as we get that approved, we'll find out, you know, get the numbers for the individual property owners, we'll get an idea if anybody's going to accept this thing and move forward.
Them people there, they don't do appraisal, I mean, they don't look at appraisal for these...
FEMA's done certain internal appraisals, you know, based upon their own factors, and that's the number they're going to offer. I mean, there's some variation on it, but it's not going to be a hundred percent. I mean, if, if the average valuation out there is two-hundred thousand dollars a lot and that's, and they allocate four-point-two million dollars for the property, FEMA's not going to come up with another four million dollars to double the price for everybody. They're just not going to do it. So Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, how they came up the valuation was outside our scope, I don't know. I mean, there's some negotiating going back and forth, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be a big swing.
Well, somebody ain't doing, I don't know.
Well, I mean, again...
Somebody appraisal wrong then.
Well, some, a number of these properties are vacant lots that may not, that may have very low values, because they, on a vacant lot, you're really looking at sort of the tax value on the road. On a structure, you know, it's a little more negotiating, and so I could be, you know, so it's probably not fair to say two-hundred thousand dollars equal, because some of those vacant lots may only be worth fifty thousand, they're not necessarily waterfront, or they may be waterfront and washed away. I mean, there's considerable variation in the values out there.
Do we got anywhere else to help kick in on that?
Not unless the county wants to come in out of some other funding source, which you don't have available right now.
We don't have none.
I mean, your only other funding source, which would not be anywhere near great enough, is the Ballpoint Trust Fund. And I wouldn't begin to start that, because one, you don't have nearly enough money to do that.
Yeah.
I'm getting premature. Let's see what the valuation's coming in at. I was just making some, you know, a calculation based upon the number of lots and the total grant package.
How many lots out there?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one in this parcel, in this, in this, in this application.
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
Now to take care of all of them?
Well, if all sold for the price, yes. I mean, if for the price that FEMA offers them, they would take care of all of them.
We wouldn't have to be worried about no more down the road?
Oh, no, 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 Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, no. There are some, Commissioner Bolt, I'll defer to you, but three-hundred houses west of the campground, that if we don't solve the road problem, eventually everybody's going to get mad at us and want to get out of there. So no, the number of people who are dissatisfied with living on Alligator Point could easily go up, and those numbers would want to sell if we can't solve the road problem.
What we going to do, what we going to have to do to start preparing the subject?
Well, my solution is to apply an MSBU out there to provide a funding source to make sure the road can be maintained.
Okay.
Now, that's a premature statement that everybody in Alligator Point is going to start getting the pitchforks already for me, but there is a known way to get money, and that's one of the known ways. Are there other alternatives? We are looking at other alternatives, and later on my report, we'll talk about that study. There may be other ways to protect the, to stop the erosion process out there, but beach re-nourishment with an MSBU is a known way of doing it. And I'm not saying it's the only way, but it's a known way of doing it.
Well, we got to do something because it's going in circles, it's going in circles. I mean, this going to happen again?
Commissioner, I have, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the yes, sir, it's going to happen again. It's going to happen, and the worst part about it, and this is, you know, a broken record, it could easily happen at the ends of the area where we've already fixed, because that's the areas that are going to be vulnerable. So if we build this road back and we put a seawall, a vertical seawall there, the erosion's going to take place at the ends, and so we're going to see problems on this point again if we don't put something out there that the water can beat up on, which is what a beach is all about. It's a sacrificial structure.
Well, we got to start somewhere.
We are, we are, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We got to start somewhere, I mean, you can't...
We're ahead of ourselves. First, we need to get FEMA money to put the road in first, because if FEMA somehow we fight over that, then you all are going to be in Iowa. If we don't get FEMA assistance to build that road back, there's going to have to be alternatives discussed. I mean, I think we will in the next few months, but that's the first step.
Road no good without protection.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
That's exactly right.
That's right. You got it. Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
As it relates to your hazard mitigation grant funding here, you're saying that any project that Pam submits would need a twenty-five percent match?
Yes.
I would like for that to come back to the board before you submit any project.
Oh, well.
Just as we did with the mitigation on C-30 that we just talked about.
Well.
And where's the money coming from? If we don't have a twenty-five percent match, then we can't do the project.
That's correct.
Another thing, Alan, you skipped an informant's when you're speaking so fast, that the school board and the cities are entitled to ask for some of this money. board and the cities are entitled to ask for some of this money, if they do, they will have to provide their own local match.
Yes, that's correct.
Not the county government.
Yes, yes.
So I want to put that out there, too.
Yeah, I thought I said it, but I may have said it fast.
If you did, I don't remember, but I just want to put that out there, that...
Yeah, so there's...
And a lot of these projects that she has, the list I've looked at, some of them are within the cities and municipalities, and I just wanted to put that out, that they have to come up with their own match, and that's, we've talked about a 12.5% match for C-30 down here, but you're talking about a 25% match, you're talking about a lot of dollars to actually, unless you're doing a, you know, a $10,000 project, 25%, you know, $2,500, but if you go to a bigger project, then you're talking about major dollars, I just want that brought back to this board, so we know where that 25% is coming from.
Oh, absolutely.
Before we actually apply for a particular project, we need to know where the match is coming from.
That's correct, that's correct. And there are employees that deal with the match, and this happened a number of years ago when I was doing some of the mitigation, using the volunteer fire departments as an example. Volunteer fire departments all got a series of window treatments, this is probably 25 years ago, they got screens on the windows, and the match there was, we bought the screens, but they installed them. So there are ways that are small projects...
Mitigating the local match?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
As long as we know what we're doing, is what I'm trying to say.
I will say, and I probably shouldn't say it now, because the school board, this is a school board project, one of the projects the school board was looking at was putting in, improving their access road back, you know, across forest land. I wish them well, we'll support them any way we can, I just say this now, that is my experience, and using Alligator Point as a golden example, that you can't put the kind of road in you want, you have to put the kind of road that the federal money requires you to put in, which is not necessarily just a line rock based road, they might be required to put in drainage, culverts, mitigate, who knows, and instead of a $70,000, $80,000 project, they may end up with a $700,000, $800,000 project.
For the match?
No, for the overall cost, but then their match goes up.
Right.
And that's a decision, that's...
Is that a hazard, is that a, have they applied to do that?
We don't, it's a discussion we have, that needs to be finished, about whether that's really going to be a mitigation project or not.
Okay.
But that's something they'd like to see.
To tell you the truth, they need to put it in there right, because down the line they're going to do, you put, you know, you go in there rigging up something, they ain't going to do nothing but wash out.
Well, I understand, and that's the federal government's approach, if you're going to do it, you got to do it right.
Yeah.
But that's, it's a project for the school board, and I shouldn't even be talking about it.
I mean, that goes for us, the school board, the county city, and anyway, you know, do it right, and you won't have these problems later.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Alan, I see a couple of thoughts here. Isn't it interesting, it seems like a conflict, in that FEMA originally said, we'll approve the project, build the road back where it was, and now they're talking about buying 21 parcels of land, landward of the existing road. Doesn't that seem like a conflict right now?
No, because one of what we proposed to buy the lots, thinking that we could move the road, and then, so this initial process started thinking that we could move the road.
Yeah.
Then FEMA intermediate staff said, oh, we think there's a clause in there that you can't use this money. But FCMC and I believe that if we ever do acquire all the property, that we can overcome that intermediate level and get the road relocated, but we can't get the road relocated unless we own all the lots, and this is the beginning of buying those lots. So admittedly, Commissioner, for the time being, those lots along that right-of-way will be vacant, they won't have any, you know, they'll have value to the public, because they'll be vacant, and they'll have their environmental values, but they won't have any use to the public, they'll just be, you know, and I don't even know the layout now, because no one's sold anything, but we may only have three or four in that area where we need 15, we only have three or four of them, I don't know how many, we may have 10 of them, I don't know. But if we don't start the acquisition process, you'll never have the opportunity to move the road.
Yeah, okay.
It's just one of these things, chicken or the egg, what do you do?
So the picture will be, we'll have the road rebuilt at 4.7 million, and then in the future, we end up maybe potentially tearing that 4.7 million up and going backwards.
No, I don't think we're going to tear it up, I think Hurricane will push us back.
Sure will, yeah, okay.
I mean, let's be realistic, and I, you know, you don't want to talk about design flaws and design failure, but the road is where it's at, is at risk for another Hurricane Michael.
Yeah.
I'm not going to tell you that if a Hurricane Michael came after we built this project, the road would be intact. You know, it's just, you just can't design it that strong. You would have to build a seawall that's 20 feet tall, and we're not, we're building a wall that's nine feet tall. So there's going to be a storm surge that's going to overtop the road in its current location, it's going to overtop the road if we move it 50 feet landward, it's, I mean, Alligator Point is at risk. The best way to solve Alligator Point's problem is to put something out there to minimize the way of action on that structure. A beach is one way, subsurface, you know, granite boulders out there, sort of the size they have on Kate Sandblaze might be another way, and maybe the Corps of Engineers has another design factor, I mean, there might be other things out there. But yeah, as long as the water is beating on that shore, I don't think any engineering firm is going to guarantee that that road will be there. And because Alligator Point is, the lots aren't deep enough, you know, if we buy those lots, those lots are only 100 feet deep, so the maximum you're going to move that road is 100 feet back, and the erosion out there is, I don't know what it is, it's 35 feet every 50 years or whatever, I mean, so it's, you know, in some grandchildren's lifetimes out there, that problem's going to still be there.
Thank you.
Well, they got to pay for what they get. I mean, simply that, you want to live out there? You got to help people.
There's a cost living on Alligator Point, and I've said this before, that is extraordinary, that road is an extraordinary cost that the county road department budget is not prepared to handle. You don't have a line I'm in there for, and just as Howard said, after the last storm, Nedra, whatever it's called, what was it called, Nedra?
Nestor.
Nestor. There was $35,000 expenditure for that one, that one road by the road department, and that came out of their budget. If you have two or three there a year, you have $100,000 expenses, and the road department can't handle that budget by itself.
Well, you always pay for luxury. That's a luxury, and you've got to pay for luxury.
It's a nice place to live, but there's a cost out there that has, that is coming to bear, I was going to say.
And one more thing, Alan, if I may, Mr. Chairman. This potential meeting that we're going to have with Representative Schoeffe and FDOT is, one option is to ask FDOT, and this is again a theory, but I'd like to see what their current principles are, to consider taking back that Alligator Point road, and look, what are their criteria to even say, we'll consider? The other thought may be that perhaps we could offer, we could maybe exchange a road, we'll take one of their state roads here within our county area and offer that road back. All of this conversation goes to show how this county has been an excellent manager of such an impaired road in this state, and I think this is a good conversation to be having, and let's see what happens.
Let's see what happens, yeah, I mean, you are much more optimistic.
I know I am, but, you know, we'll just see, I just, we want to, we want to know what we know, and get up to date, we're, I think the last letter we had was over two years old. Thinking is changing.
I don't think the county want to take nothing to stake yet.
You don't think there's anything that functionally, without a bridge?
No, sir, I don't.
Do you think?
They ain't maintaining, how we going to maintain?
Well, I'm thinking that maybe it's less of a cost to maintain a state road than it would be what we're paying at Alligator Point for 30 years. It's a thought.
I mean, the problem is, we have very few state highways in Franklin, we have US-98, and we have 65.
Yeah, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask you, Alan, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted you to have the conversation, just a thought, I don't know how deep the water gets there, or how quickly it gets deep by the part of the road that's, or road of the worst is the biggest problem, but is there a possibility to at least ask the state, which is a proper instance it would be, since it's hard to have a wall high enough, would they consider giving us a permit to have somebody go offshore and dredge a channel, so the water has somewhere to break before it gets to the road? Just a thought.
Anything's possible, you're doing that with, in the state of soccer land. Let me tell you how, we had a beach re-nurishment project designed and permitted with the sand source off Alligator Point, and we got a tremendous amount of grief from some of the recreational fishing industry, because tarpon are out there, and they didn't want us messing with the sand shore where the tarpon migrate across, because it's a great fishing habitat for tarpon seasonally. And, I mean, that's the kind of issues you come into when you start altering the environment out anywhere. So we had a hard time getting that permitted, even though tarpon was a very, you know, wasn't a game, it was a game fish for a couple of weeks out of the year, however long it was, but I hear what you're saying, but, yeah.
Just weighing on that, I would think that having a road for our residents and invite them to visit the point should outweigh tarpon fishing.
Sure.
You would think so.
That's my consideration.
All right.
And we got, we won that battle, but that was a battle.
We got to move on, we got to have a gentleman.
Good, thank you, Alan.
That's it for me? Does she have something for me?
Keep up the good work, bring us some money back. Next on the agenda is this. About the Eric Love train, extension of it.
Good morning, Commissioners, I don't have anything extra for you this morning, unless you have some questions from my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
You done moved in yet?
No, we're still waiting on the final items to be taken care of by the contractor there, hoping to be moving things in during December, sometime after the first of the year, to have it actually back open to the public. Yes, Michael?
I'm sorry, whenever you finish with Eric. There's a, there's a letter, there's a request from the state, we have to send a letter asking to extend those funds, so check your email when you get back to the office, and let me know what you want me to do.
Okay, yeah, I can get in touch with Dee, board you're up there.
They might do start all over?
No.
No, I was only saying, I'm joking.
I don't know, that's a state.
Well, I think, I think the contracted funds are supposed to go through, I think the end of December.
I think it's at the end of December, I just wanted an extension.
Yeah, but we should be, I mean, the contractor should be completely out of there by then, I don't know if that's involving, you know, if we have to have our payment completed to the county by then, or what, but I'll sort that out, yeah.
Check it out, though, Mr. Eric.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got anything else? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have, the public hearing, we can't do before 10 o'clock, so if you don't mind, we can move on to the Sun Trail program, I think I see Mrs. Preble and Mr. Curtis here.
Come on up, son.
Good morning. My name's Debbie Preble, I'm with Kemley Horn, and I'm here to talk to you about the Franklin County segment of the Capital City to Sea Loop Trail. The DOT has a grant program that's open right now, and we are working with FSU and the St. Joe Company, because they both are very supportive of this segment of the trail being constructed, because they both have property along the trail frontage. The county will need to be the applicant, we've met with your staff, and we're working on preparing the grant application. The county, the trail, the paved trail is expected to go from the, connect the sidewalks that are within the city of Carabel near Kendrick Park, and go all the way along 98 over the Oc Lockney Bridge, and connect to a trail system in just the other side of the Oc Lockney Bridge, that's not built yet, but is currently under design and construction, and will likely be built before this segment is. The, the grant cycle is open, the grant applications are due December 20th, and we're working to get letters of support, and what we're asking for you today is a resolution in support of the grant application, and an acknowledgement that the county will be responsible for the minor, minor maintenance. I have done a little bit more research on both the maintenance and the liability issues with respect to the county. The county will be responsible for what DOT calls the minor maintenance, which would include debris removal, mowing the, mowing the grass, weed control, litter pickup, graffiti removal, if that becomes a problem. DOT will assume the major responsibilities, such as resealing, repaving, things that need to be done in 10, 15, 25 years, DOT will take care of those, of those items. As far as liability goes, the liability for the portions of the trail that are within the DOT right-of-way will be assumed by DOT, they'll assume that liability. If some portions of the trail are outside of the DOT right-of-way, you know, a little meander through the woods or something like that, OGT, which is Office of Greenways and Trails at DEP, they have a program where the county can access their program to take care of the liability for those portions of the trail. So I think the county's liability and maintenance costs will be, will be minimal. The grant application that we're preparing does not require a local match, and we're not submitting it with a local match. It's about 21 miles, 20.7 miles of trail, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to...
Do that one, okay, do that trail go down in Alligator Point?
No. There are future plans to include a much broader trail network, and it would also go eventually out to St. George Island into the town of Appalachia Cola, but this segment just goes from the Carabel City limits where the sidewalks begin to over the Oc Lockney Bay Bridge.
Mr. Chairman, there is, the county is actually building a bike trail on Alligator Point, but at this point, it does not connect, so we're starting at the marina end of Alligator Point and working our way towards US-98, so...
Eventually it will connect.
Yeah, but that's something we're, the county is designing through a lab program.
Right, and the Capital City to Sea Loop Trail eventually will connect all the way through Tallahassee, connect all the way up to Georgia, so it'll be, the number of miles that you'll put together that a biker could ride their bike on is the type of mileage that attracts people internationally who want to come ride a bike for 80 miles and things like that. So we believe it'll promote safety. FSU has their campus in Franklin County is split by a canal, so they have students that are walking on the shoulder, and to get from where they're lodging and their labs are to where their classrooms are, and they're, as you know, they're expanding there greatly, and will have a lot more students and instructors at their facility. It will also promote ecotourism, that I talked about briefly, and it'll also improve the, you know, transportation choices for people in that area to be able to move safely along the US-98 corridor.
But wouldn't they, when they do go through Alligator Point, wouldn't that, couldn't they help put some sand on that beach?
Well, the bike path is already designed, and using the point, down at the point, it actually, the road there, there's actually two segments already designed, one of the segments, and I forget which goes to which, is going to be a paved shoulder on either side of the existing road, and then when it gets closer to the washout area, it becomes a structure on the north side of the road, so we're designing it to stay away from the water.
But it's going to be bringing tourists in there, so they...
Well, yes, sir, but DOT is only building there, they're not...
That's a good point, I appreciate you hanging from there.
Would it be any money in there to help pay the county to hire somebody to pick up trash and take maintenance?
No, no, sir.
You know, but that's a good point, shouldn't we, Aaron, be thinking about setting up a trust funders anticipated money that we're going to need to have ready to maintain this as we go forward?
I mean, most likely it would fall between your road department budget and your parks and recreation budget, you know, because that's where most of the maintenance is taken care of for the county, so that's just something that, for you all to keep in mind, you know, when you review the budgets next year, that there is added responsibilities.
But we're just there on the design phase, construction is years away.
Yes, I would say, construction is probably a minimum of five years away.
Yeah. I feel comforted about the, it sounds like our liability is pretty minimal in this situation, I think that's a good thing, and I also just, I'm really pleased about the fact that this is such a multidisciplinary effort, FSU and the state and our county and other interested sources like St. Joe is, I think this is an excellent opportunity.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Ms. Preble, the Sun Trail program is shared use non-motorized, that's what Sun stands for, right?
That's right.
I just wanted to state that publicly, so the public will be aware what kind of trail we're talking about, because that's, in my district, that tends to be an issue, doesn't matter if there's a sign that says, no motorized vehicles allowed, anyway, I just wanted to state that publicly.
Right.
This is going to look similar in form and fashion to what's already presently above US Highway 98 in Waukatah County, correct?
Right, it'll be a 12-foot wide paved trail.
Okay.
It's a good thing for walkers and to keep them safe.
So, I got a question, Matt, is there any other county where we can judge that, you know, for every mile of the trail, maintenance is XYZ, so we have, the attorney's going to ask you about liability here in a second, I can see his face, but I'm asking more about the maintenance as it relates to the budget, so how could we judge?
Well, I would say the best judge would be, it's my understanding that you have existing trails in Franklin County...
And George Island.
That you already maintain.
Okay.
And so I would just...
Won't be much different.
No, I wouldn't expect it to be much different.
Actually, it's not a liability question necessarily, we would just add that to our insurance policy and have the insurance cover whatever liabilities may occur.
My question was, I, I wasn't clear, Ms. Preble, that once the, the trail is constructed and paved, does maintenance for the county include repair to the asphalt surfacing and replacement of asphalt surfacing when it degrades?
No, DOT will assume that responsibility for the portions of the trail that are in the DOT right-of-way.
What about the portions outside the DOT right-of-way?
If, well, we don't even know if there will be any portions outside the DOT right-of-way at this point. There's been some talk of having it meander away from ninety-eight in some areas. The county could choose not to do that for the reason you're implying, the cost of maintenance and liability. And then there's the Office of Greenways and Trails at DEP. They have a program that you can get a designation of the trail as part of their trail system, and they'll help with those.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I, I missed, what is the, the overall length of the trail in Franklin County?
Twenty point seven miles.
Within Franklin County?
Within Franklin County. Well, that includes the little portion that goes over the bridge into Ock Lockney, probably a quarter of a mile of it's outside Franklin County.
But at this point, we don't know how much of that is within the DOT right-of-way, and how much is outside the DOT right-of-way?
I would say the majority, if not all of it's in the DOT right-of-way.
Okay. But before the county would have to assume any repair or maintenance or construction costs?
So, what.
That, that would come back to them, they would decide.
Right, so what, what I'm proposing, the way I'm writing the grant application is if the grant funds are awarded, that money will come to the county, and the county will administer it, and the county will have control over how the funds are spent, and will choose the engineer to do the design work, and will have, you know, input into that. So it will be under, if the grant's awarded, it will be under the county's control.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the board aware of something regarding this. And, Ms. Preble, you mentioned the Office of Greenways and Trails. Mr. Chris Rito, which is the executive director for ARPC, serves on that board of the Office of Greenway and Trails. Not just at, at large, but he's on the actual executive board, so just so you're aware of that. We already have a connection with that office, it's on the track. I make a motion to approve the, the request.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, talking about Commissioner Maston. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass you none of them.
Well, thank you for that, good. And I would like to add one thing. We, in support of the grant application, we have been working to get letters of support. We were getting a lot of letters of support, even from Commissioners in nearby counties have agreed to write letters of support. But I also have some generic letters of support I brought with me today. And if there's anybody in the audience that would like, either a business owner or even a resident that would like to provide a letter of support, I'll hang around outside the chambers for a few minutes. And if anybody wants to sign a letter, I'll have them available. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much.